Thank you for all coming tonight for the January 28, 2025 city council meeting. This public meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications or to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom meeting link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council in a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish a link. The minutes shall know the interruption. It is defined in the city Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. Tonight in attendance we have, we'll list up. We have V, my veterans, we have Rob Vikari, building commissioner, we have Nancy Papos from the assessors, we have Holly Doug Willow from HR, we have Mike Hale from the DPW, we have Jill, our CAO, we have Elise Sinagra from the council and agent, and Suzanne Egan. Remote, we have councillor Scott Memhard. And also Kenny Costa. In person, we have Jason Nylund. Jason, sorry, Jason Groh, Marjorie Grace, Val, myself, Sean, Dylan, Frank, absent, we have Tony and Jeff at this time. And with that, we'll next start with the flag salute in a moment of silence. The flag salute would be myself tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is oral communication. The public shall have the opportunity every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not apparent on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or a complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the city council, city to make their statement without debate, and the city council will refer the matters to the office of the mayor. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. Do we have anybody here tonight that would like to speak under oral communications? Please come on up. All right, over to the, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, I'm Carla De La Porta, homeowner and resident of 9 Cleveland Street. I'm readdressing a topic brought to council's attention at the June 2024 public hearing. I spoke on behalf of more than 415 petitioners to request this administration complete a notice of intent application for MBTA quiet zones for Cleveland Street, Cedar Street, and Maplewood Avenue train crossings. I'll resend the application and my talking points to the clerk, which covered community experience with train horns, reasons for requesting a quiet zone, definition of a quiet zone, and how we made clear that we're not expecting the city to fund potential future quiet zones. So, there's a lawsuit pending which may impact the future of quiet zones in our state. That's why we're not asking for the city to commit to advocating for quiet zones at this stage. What we're asking for is this administration to take a small but vital step to complete the notice of intent application. Yes, this will require city staff resources, but myself and others are ready to volunteer our time to alleviate the administrative burden if allowed. We're requesting the application be complete because if the court upholds quiet zones, we want to be prepared. Now, even if not ultimately pursued, completing the application will leave the city better positioned if the need for another quiet zone arises in the future, such as with new development. The process will also give the city a deeper understanding of the regulatory landscape around transportation noise. The required data collection will no doubt have many future alternative applications. The process will grow intergovernmental relations since it requires collaboration with the MBTA as well as state and federal alignment. And the process alone may also identify other potential solutions. Really importantly, even if a quiet zone isn't ultimately pursued, the city's efforts to explore it will be a powerful sign to us that our government is responsive to our concerns.
Ten seconds, please.
I'll just express that we're not asking the administration to advocate for, fund, or even agree with the idea of a quiet zone. We're just requesting a simple but meaningful first step of completing the application.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a statement you'd like to give to the clerk?
Can I email it in the morning?
Yes.
Thanks so much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at oral communications tonight? We have none online or present? Linda, can we bring Linda in?
Good evening, can you all hear me?
Ken, if you could just give us your name and address, please, Linda?
Yes, it's Linda Rash Collarin. I live at 68 East Main Street.
Right, please state your concern.
Yes, thank you so much for letting me talk. I was there two weeks ago to talk about warming centers in the evening in Gloucester, and I have not heard anything from the mayor's office. I made the request of the mayor and thought that he's supposed to respond within two weeks. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I have not heard anything about, from the mayor's office, and so, and I know we don't have any overnight.
All right, we've lost Linda, we can move on to the next.
And it really seems, it just saddens me that there are people out there that do not have a warm place to go that, where they feel safe. And we've got, you know, we're the wealthiest country in the world, what are we doing? That's all I have to state. Should I just wait for the mayor to respond, or what?
We missed part of your presentation, but we get the gist of it, and the mayor has some information on warming centers and what they're trying to do. We look forward to him getting back to you personally to give you a notice of where they're at on that, and thank you very much for your.
That'd be great. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And next up, we have Mary Ann Boucher.
Good evening, Mary Ann Boucher, 93 Mile Pleasant Avenue. I, like Linda, also spoke two weeks ago in regards to the East Gloucester School property, and I am requesting again to Scott Memhard, our Ward One councillor, our mayor, and also all of you on the council, to give the public some sort of update as to what will be happening with that property. Have the RFP bids been completed? I've also put in a public records request for any information. I do not even see that that public records request is even online right now. I don't know why. I don't fill out too many, so I might be unfamiliar with, with the process, but the rumors are starting to unfold, and that's the last thing that we want to see, are rumors coming about, about what's going to happen there. We all know from the many, many meetings that majority of you have attended, what should be taking place. And we're hoping that the children of our city do have the open space that they were promised from our administration. So, I would appreciate somebody getting back to me. I don't feel that I should have to keep pursuing this city council meeting after city council meeting. We had, we had a lot of meetings in regards to $34,000 consultants, saying what there would be. We had meetings of you all approving a $2 million loan order to take that building down, and I just want to make sure that we're all moving in the same direction. So, if somebody could get back to me in regards to this, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I'd like to also announce that councillor Lodge Worthley is now present with us. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak under oral communications? And there's no one online, no one present, so I'd like to close oral communications. And then we're going to move on to Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
All right. So first up, we have Katie Parsons. How you doing, Katie? If you just want to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself, being a new appointment, and thank you for volunteering.
Good evening, my name's Kate Parsons, I live at 11 Highland Street in East Gloucester. Sorry, can you not hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay. My name's Kate Parsons, I live at 11 Highland Street in East Gloucester. I have been on the Open Space and Recreation Committee for about a year. One of our colleagues on that committee's term as representative to the CPC is coming to an end, and so the committee needs a new representative to be on the CPC, and I have volunteered to do that, and am looking forward to that role.
Excellent, thank you. Is there any councillor questions or comments for Kate? All right, councillor Majota, do we have?
Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, the ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Kate Parsons to the committee, preservation committee, term ending 2/15/28, and I so moved.
Second.
All right, and this is going to be by roll call vote? And the roll tonight will start with myself, and that's a yes, Kate, thank you very much. Next.
Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes, thank you, Katie.
Councillor Benson.
Aye.
Councillor Gilman.
Aye.
Councillor Grace.
Yes.
Councillor Groh.
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Majota.
Aye.
Councillor Memhard.
Aye, thank you, Kate.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Kate, thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you all.
Next up, we have Emily Oliver, for the traffic commission, term to end 2/15/2027. How you doing tonight, Emily? If you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name is Emily Oliver, I'm a lifelong resident of West Gloucester. I was asked by Mr. Bob Ryan to join the traffic commission, and I thought it would be a good way to get more involved in the community.
Excellent. Is there any questions or comments for Emily? I would like to say that Emily's family has gone back generations in the city, helping with all kinds of events, sticking their neck out there financially, and with their own respect to the dignity to try to make this a better spot and a better place for people, and I thank you for stepping up. And with that being said, councillor Majota.
Committee recommendation on a motion by councillor Worthley, seconded by myself, the ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Emily Oliver to the traffic commission, term ending 2/15/27, and I so moved.
Second.
And this will be by roll call.
Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Benson.
Aye.
Councillor Gilman.
Aye.
Councillor Grace.
Yes.
Councillor Groh.
Aye.
Councillor Majota.
Yes.
Councillor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
Excellent, thank you, Emily, have a great evening. Next up, we have John Harris from the DPW, to work on the traffic commission, term to end 2/15/2027. John, how you doing tonight? You just want to give us a brief description of, of who you are and what you do?
John Harris, I live at 26 Pine Street, lifelong resident. I've been with the DPW for 14 years, started water sewer, now two signs and meters.
Excellent, is there any councillor questions or comments for John? Councillor Worthley?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't see Dylan.
I don't have a question, just a comment. Thank you first for doing this, I know you don't get paid extra for this volunteer effort, but I feel like you've, in a roundabout way, been on the traffic commission, at least in terms of implementing all the things that the traffic commission and this council's put forward. I just want to thank you and wish you well on the committee, look forward to working with you.
Thank you, councillor Worthley, councillor Benson.
Thank you, John, for stepping up, I just want to say a thank you, and also, we met several months ago when you were cleaning up the graffiti outside of Central Grammar, and I want to thank you for doing that and your service to our community.
Thank you. Councillor Gilman.
Thank you. John was my neighbor for many years, and our kids used to hop on the bus together, so, but more importantly, there was a day that I was really struggling with using the kiosk down on Main Street, and you came running over, and you were there, you rolled up your sleeves, and you were just helping me out, and I've seen you do that countlessly to other people and the public. So, thank you for that type of community spirit, and I will be supporting you tonight. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Councillor Majota. Do you have a comment?
I'm ready to read it.
I just want to give a word. John, I've known you for about 40 years now, you're a hard worker, you have a great family, you've become the, the ghost whisperer to our parking kiosks, and it was something that was new to you, you've really taken it on, you've learned, you've worked very hard at it. Your information that brings back to the people that are looking for help and also to the administration is wonderful, and I wish you well, and again, thank you for volunteering on the traffic commission, it means a lot to the city. Even though you're going to have to do all the work that they recommend, it's all your job to put those signs up. It's a process. Councillor Majota.
Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, the ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint John Harris to the traffic commission, term ending 2/15/27, and I so moved.
Second.
And this will be by roll call vote.
Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes.
Councillor Benson.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman.
Yes.
Councillor Grace.
Yes.
Councillor Groh.
Yes.
Councillor Majota.
Yes.
Councillor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
All right, next on the agenda.
That's the consent agenda.
Excellent. Is there any councils that wish to pull any matters off the consent agenda? Officer councillor Jason Groh.
Pulling off city council order 2025-006.
Okay, and the reason?
We need a citywide waiver of the notice because this is a citywide zoning change.
Excellent. All in favor by roll call? Or any discussion?
So, are we not removing the things first, and?
Oh, we can remove, yeah, then we can go back.
Oh, and then go back.
All right, excellent.
Okay, okay, so, may I?
Yes.
I'd like to remove city council 2025-007 Worthley.
If I could just make a point of information, do we have other copies of the agenda? Because I don't know if any of us have the template.
Read the back without. It's funny, you.
All stapled together.
So, I'm looking through it, I've got the template, and I'll have the, oh, there it is, it's all right.
This is request the administration's facilitative management audit.
Yep. So, I would like, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda of January 28 as amended.
So, we're not doing this, I have a couple of things I'd like to take off the consent agenda first, too. Don't we go around and?
Go ahead.
Then I will take back my, my motion.
So, management appointments, general counsel, and then reappointments, Waterways Ford. Please.
All Waterways Ford?
It's the only.
Only one. So.
Would like to approve the consent agenda for January 28 as amended.
All in favor?
It's a roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes.
I'm sorry, councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes.
Councillor Benson.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman.
Yes.
Councillor Grace.
Yes.
Councillor Groh.
Yes.
Councillor Majota.
Aye.
Councillor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
So, if we go back to our original, we would start with councillor Groh.
Great, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to waive notice to butters in accordance with GZO section 1.11.4B, and set the public hearing date to Tuesday, March 11, 2025, and vote to refer to P and D and planning board.
Second.
This will be by roll call.
Point of information, are we voting to waive or waiting to refer?
We're voting to waive and to refer.
So, two separate votes in one?
It can be one vote. You want to?
I say one vote's fine.
Yeah, so combining them is, we're combining two votes, so we're not going to bifurcate, okay?
This will be a roll call.
Discussion?
If there is a discussion, if you'd like.
I just want to understand, I think the public should know, and I appreciate that waiving notification doesn't mean people aren't notified, they're just not notified by mail, right? There's going to be public notification on the city website and other places about this change, correct?
Right, just so that people are clear on the concept, anytime there's a zoning change, a butters to a certain distance are notified by mail. A citywide zoning change would require everyone to be notified by mail, and it's been determined that that is fiscally not advisable, it's expensive to do that. Every, the public, the P and D and the planning board will both have meetings, and we will have a public hearing at the city council, and the planning board will have a public hearing in advance of, of moving this forward. So, there will be plenty of notice, and this is going to be first going to the planning board, and then we'll come back to P and D when they're resolved with the, with the order.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call.
Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes.
Councillor Benson.
Aye.
Councillor Gilman.
Yes.
Councillor Grace.
Yes.
Councillor Groh.
Aye.
Councillor Majota.
Yes.
Councillor Memhard.
Aye.
All right, so next up, we're going to go back to councillor Gilman on CC 2025-007 Worthley.
Yes, so that's to request that the administration facilitate a management audit of the school department with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in accordance with the Gloucester City Charter, section 7-12, management audits, and request a district review report. I would like that also to be referred to BNF, because we will need a funding source, and as you recall, the city council had less than $30,000 budgeted on our line item that included that, and this would probably be five to 10 times more expensive than that, so we'll have to find a funding source.
Excellent, thank you, councillor Gilman, is there any other discussion?
So, the question is to add it to, as a referral to BNF. BNF obviously can't, budget and finance can't initiate funding, we could suggest funding, I think, but we can't initiate it. The intent was to ask the administration to facilitate that, so they would come back to us with a funding source to be referred to budget and finance at that time, but I'm happy to send it to budget and finance, but we really can't allocate funds.
Well, I, may I?
Councillor Gilman.
So, I, I think that it would be a helpful exercise, because there's a possibility that someone will say, someone will need to put that in their budget for fiscal 2026, which we're not in right now, which is something that they could plan to discuss and figure out where they might be able to find the money if they felt that that was important. So, I just think that it's a good practical opportunity to hash this out transparently and in front of BNF.
Thank you, councillor Gilman. Councillor Groh.
I have a question, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it not the council's responsibility to initiate departmental audits? I mean, we're asking the administration to do it, but it's actually a council function? So, why would we be sending this to the mayor's office to begin with?
So, this is?
We do have councillor Worthley had his hand up first.
Right. So, 20 years ago, when an audit was conducted, maybe a little more than that, it was sent to the administration first to identify the funding to do that, and that's how it was conducted. This was done in consultation with the city clerk in terms of looking at historic path of doing this, as well as a city auditor. The actual conducting of the audit is a responsibility of the council. The funding would be a mayoral decision, and that's why, and I appreciate having a nice exercise at budget and finance to be transparent about what it would cost, but I would think there'd be no pending action to send it to budget and finance to say, like if it's on our agenda, what do we do? We just talk about what it might cost, we'd have to ask the purchasing department to do RFPs and get some quotes, and that's down the road, I would imagine. So, so that would be addressing to, I'm happy to send it to budget and finance, I just don't know what action we could actually perform until we have a request from the mayor. And then as far as, yes, it's a council decision to do an audit, but the funding would be part of the facilitative management audit, the request from the administration, like it was done before.
All right, excellent. Councillor Gilman, you have another question?
So, when we looked into this more recently than 22 years ago, we had an opportunity to talk with Kenny and talk with city administration, and they developed an RFP that they gave to purchasing, of which they went and solicited bids for auditors that were interested. And at that point, we only got one, and it was about five times more than the money that we had in our city council budget, and we decided that it was just way too much money, because the wording in our city charter is a little bit different than how things have evolved today with audits. And, you know, so what we've talked, what we talked about is that sometimes you have to scope it down in your RFP, and if you didn't do that, you would be getting bids that were just insurmountable amount of monies that are taking these companies a year to do the audit from start to finish, and that's just not something that we would be able to afford.
Excellent, thank you, councillor Gilman, councillor Groh.
So, it's okay, that's right, my knee hurts right now, anyway. Aren't we not putting the cart before the horse here? I mean, the council hasn't even decided on whether or not we want to do an audit of the school department, so why would we send it to the mayor's office without having a discussion about whether or not, one, it's appropriate to do it at this time, and whether or not we're going to seek the funding? I mean, at this point, we ought to be sending to O and A, should we have, should the city council initiate an audit of the school department before we have a discussion about whether or not we send it to the mayor's office?
All right. I'd like to make a motion on this, that we continue this two weeks, so we can get together and get more facts on what the process is and how we want to do this. There seems to be a lot of questions, I understand what's going on, I was involved with the last audit that we were looking to do, and how much the charter says we have to do, and how much we have to come up. I was involved with the last audit that we were looking to do, and how much the charter says we have to do, and how much we have to come up with. So maybe we put it through to BNF in a mayor's request, and then when the mayor's comes backwards the answer, then this would go before Budget and Finance, or maybe table it until we can get more information in two weeks. And Counselor Worthley?
Yes. So first of all, I agree with Counselor Gro. The first question is, does the city council want to do this? And that would be a discussion that would start from us sending it to Ordinance Administration Committee, and then back to the council to make that decision. Then the next step, the horse would be next before the cart, would be, Mr. Mayor, if we agree we want to do this, can you identify the funds? And then that'd be a referral to Budget and Finance. This wasn't just on a whim. I actually put this in a couple of weeks ago, and then it didn't make it in on time. But Madam Clerk, without putting you in any awkward position, we discussed this via email, and Kenny Costa did as well, that the first step is a referral from the council to O and A, and that's why it's before us as is. And then if there's funding for this, and the council decides if there's funding, then it'd be a budget question.
That's what was done in 2003 or 2005 for the school audit.
Can I suggest, then, that we amend the order, moving it forward, and take the administration out of the equation at this point? So that we would, we would amend the order to say, request that the city council determine whether or not to initiate a management audit of the school department, the Mass Department of Education, blah, blah, blah. I think we're premature in sending it to the administration.
We're not, the send, the send is to the Ordinance Administration Committee, where that can be discussed, amended, right? The only discussion before the council now is, do we refer this to O and A for discussion there? We would come back, if we come back to the council, if we want to reword it and amend it, you certainly have a bite at the apple at that point.
Gro?
Right, but again, the, the actual order says request that the administration facilitate a management audit of the school department. It's not the administration that would facilitate the audit, it would be the city council. So I'm just saying, let's take this administration out of the equation at this point, and say, request that the city council initiate a management audit of the school department. That's the question that O and A would then address. Questions of funding would certainly come up in that, and I think the BNF would also be advised to be part of that conversation because we are looking at potentially $250,000, $300,000 at a time when $250,000, $300,000 is a significant amount of money. I guess, I just want to take the administration out of this, that we're not asking the wrong question.
All right. I actually, this isn't the place to talk about the condition of the order. It's about the order as being informed. It's about the referral. So we can continue with a referral to O and A and add P and, Budget and Finance to it, and then work from those two committees out and find out what we want to do. So is everybody all right with that?
Okay with that.
A motion?
Yeah.
Should I second it?
So, and I so move.
Second.
All righty, this will be our roll call.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Grace?
Yes.
Counselor Gro?
Yes.
Counselor Majota?
Aye.
Counselor Memhard?
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The motion passes.
All right, next up, we have on the consent agenda, we have from Counselor Worthley, we have a question on General Counsel Suzanne Egan.
I, I did, so have we already approved the rest of the consent agenda already? Okay. So regarding the general counsel, we received an email after business hours today. It was a response to my request from a week ago, asking for a list of all pending litigation. And if I recall, at the meeting, I'd also asked for cases that had been settled and the results of those, which wasn't included in the email, but I could appreciate that maybe that was more than what I asked. It was implied, I think I said it, I haven't reviewed it, but, so we got that late today. I'd be happy to continue or vote on this, but I wondered if we want to have any conversation about that email with a list of pending litigation? Does anybody want to discuss that?
I, Counselor Gro?
I'm not sure that the list of pending litigation is relevant to whether or not we reappoint our city solicitor.
On the agenda, the pending litigation?
No.
Okay, so that may not be in, that may be in direct violation of open meeting law. If this is not on the.
Hold on.
Agenda, if this isn't, this isn't, I don't see this on the, am I, maybe I'm missing something? Acting president, I don't see any pending litigation on the agenda. Is that, am I missing something?
There, there's two things. One, everything should go through the chair. And second of all, this is something that was done after hours. The emails were sent out after business.
I did see the.
Yes. But I, I would suggest, in my own opinion, that this has nothing to do with the appointment to our general counsel. There may be things on that that we can't answer because it's in litigation, or there's issues with personnel. It's up to Counselor Worthley how he'd like to, to proceed with this. Me personally, I think that I'd like to take this off the agenda and not bring this into conversation tonight due to the fact that I have not seen the email, because I do get out of work and don't check it. And I, I don't think that that would be something that would hold up an appointment.
I have a point of order.
Go ahead, Counselor Gilman.
The point of order that I would like to stress right now is that this is an appointment to a member of city staff, and that's what we should be focused on right now. So I think I would, I would ask that you, as the chair, would allow us to vote on this because I believe that my point of order accurately reflects why this isn't part of the conversation tonight about reappointing our general counsel, and I so move.
Counselor Gilman, I'll second that vote and allow it.
A motion? Make a motion on a point of order? He just needs to validate the point, and then we get back to the discussion.
And then that document that our council president sent out says that you can, you can vote something if you need to make a decision and move forward. Do you want me to get it out?
What is the, what, I'm sorry, it's your meeting, I don't want to interrupt.
Good. So what Counselor Gilman is saying, that we can, we can vote a point of order. I don't know if we can vote it as a motion, but we can vote a point of order. It's confusing to me on that part.
Outcome. It's, it's an outcome of the point.
Exactly.
And, and what I'm, what I'm saying is that I, I move.
All right, so, and you're right, I, I do agree with the point of order, so we can vote for the outcome.
Okay, so, so I'm moving that we vote to reappoint General Counsel Suzanne Egan tonight.
Second.
Second. Second.
Counselor Majota?
I, I, I just don't under, I understand what just happened. I just don't understand what the, what's going, the legal, like, the email that we got after hours has anything to do with what she has proven the past four years. When we ask questions with legal questions regarding any laws or rules that we have to follow, Suzanne Egan has been professional, been able to answer those questions for us. I think it's based on the performance, and I don't understand why this is the second holdup with our general counsel.
It's not the second holdup. This is the first time we've had a conversation about.
Point of order. Counselor Gro?
The counselor has not been recognized by the chair.
I, I.
I'm just, I'm, just want to stress, this pending litigation email, this was not on our agenda, and I don't think we should be discussing this email about pending litigation was not on the agenda.
Point of order.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Let's talk about rubbish rules, point of order.
In a second.
I have the.
I am going to go to Counsel Worthley on this.
Thank you. So I pulled it off the consent agenda for discussion at the Ordinance Administration Committee, which we voted on. One of the conditions was that we would have some information that would inform tonight's decision. At least, that's something I needed. One of the pieces of information was a list of lawsuits we've won or lost over the last four years, which does speak to, as you mentioned, job performance. We don't have that. We've got an email at 4:47 with just the list of pending litigation, which was a part of the equation. So I want the information that will help inform our decision. I'm not going to, we don't have the authority to talk about the litigation. I appreciate that the email is not on the agenda, but the motion's on the agenda, which was a reflection of, we would be getting this information to support the decision that we made at O and A. So it's part of the equation. If it's, it's not a public, it's not a violation of open meeting law to have received an email from the administration. Administration's not subject to open meeting laws, the council is. If we received it, we received it. We received it late, some of us may have read it, some of us may have not. It's missing the piece that I thought would be helpful in terms of knowing whether we are more litigious in, in terms of going after residents and business owners, and it's whether we are winning or losing lawsuits. And I think that's relevant to the job performance. But if we just want to talk about the motion on the table to approve the general counsel, we can just do that and not worry about an email that came in late.
That's what I'd like to do.
Okay.
Counselor Gro?
Just want to point out that the list of, of cases pending, the lists of cases won or lost is not, in my view, relevant to the reappointment of the city solicitor. I don't think anyone on this dais is qualified to determine whether a loss in court is necessarily representative of one's capability in terms of representing it at a court. There's, there's a vast number of situations that might change on any given case, and, and certainly very well-equipped, very well-qualified lawyers can lose cases. Half of them do, all the time. So to sit there and suggest that we are going to, to hold up our city solicitor, who frankly, I agree, has been incredibly professional, incredibly responsive, and is always willing to go and do all the work that we have asked her to do on the basis that we have, who have no legal background, can judge her performance in a court of law or whether or not a case is settled, I think is, is frankly asking far too much of our capabilities as counselors. I think we should simply agree that, that there are cases we're going to win, cases we're going to lose, and cases we're going to settle. But by and large, I would put my stock in trade in Suzanne Egan to represent this council and this city. So I'm going to be supporting her reappointment.
One more time for Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. So I concede that whether we won or lost in court is not necessarily a reflection of our attorney, and I respect that point. My experience has been a little bit different. I had tried to put forward an ordinance on regulating wood turbines, and for six months, I was told it would be ready in two weeks, the review would be ready in two weeks. I didn't get that. The ball hockey group over in Stage 4 Park, it cost them $100,000 because we held them up legally for.
Counselor, I have a point of order.
Counselor Gilman?
This is not the time where we have a, this type of conversation about performance. If, if these have been issues that you have been concerned about, there is a venue for you to do that through the management.
What's the point of order again? That's the point. We have to.
I'm feeling like this is not relevant to what is in front of us right now.
So at this point, as had been suggested from Counsel Worthley, I'd like to call the roll on the appointment for Suzanne Egan. And with that being said, do we have, we don't have to have a motion, it's an amendment to the consent agenda, so. So. The committee report's already been read, isn't it? They already vented that, so. So it's just a, a, a. Excuse the vote. Roll call, please.
Al's already made the motion, correct?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Superfluous, sorry.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
No.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Grace?
Yes.
Counselor Gro?
Yes.
Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Aye.
Vote is seven in favor, one opposed, one absent. The motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. Next up from Counsel Worthley, he has an amendment over Waterways Board Donna Crocker for a term to expire 2/16/2028. I would ask Counselor Worthley not to get into much depth. There's no one here to represent themselves, and in the, the presence of a no vote, a no vote is understandable at this point.
Thank you.
So is there any discussion?
So there's, has there been, there's been a motion on this?
Yeah, we have. It's on the consent agenda.
Okay, so I will be supporting the reappointment of Donna Crocker. I think she's, she's done an excellent job. I've watched a lot of the Waterways Board meetings, and she has a good command of the issues that are in front of us. And I, I think she spoke to us last week, explained the issues that we might be concerned about, and I feel like it was, it was absolutely helpful to hear from her. And I've watched that meeting back in November, so I will be supporting her, and I'm grateful for her volunteerism.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Gilman, anybody else that could speak to him?
Yeah, I, I also watched the, the meeting last week, and I, I want to, as much as I can, apologize to Donna Crocker for what she had to deal with at the, at the O and A meeting. You know, if, if a counselor has issues with a particular appointment, especially volunteer appointments, I would hope that that person would take up that issue prior to the person coming before O and A, have a discussion, voice their concerns, voice their concerns to the administration.
Point of order.
And not, excuse me, I'm speaking.
You call point of order to me, I'm going to call on you now. Point of order.
Counselor Worthley?
Point is, I was asked to stand in at O and A at 5:15, 5:30.
He's making an explanation.
And I didn't have any opportunity to speak to someone who spoke to all the other counselors except me. So I don't know how you can be saying I should have done something that wasn't humanly possible.
So that's an explanation, an argument, not a reason for a point of order.
What I, what I will say, continuing my line of thinking here, is that the counselor had enough time to assemble a couple of gotcha questions that he sprung on Donna at the time. So the idea that he was completely unable to prepare for this meeting seems a little out of character from what the behavior was at the time. I'm just asking that this council recognize that people put hundreds of hours into their city. Not every person who comes before us is going to, they're going to get approved. But nobody should be put into a position of having gotcha questions, especially ones that turn out to be incorrect, at, in a public meeting, without the ability to respond and prepare for that. I think it's, it's unprofessional on our behalf, and I think it's really unfair to volunteers who come before the city council.
Go to Counsel Majota.
I'm in support of Donna. I think, I was watching the video myself, and there's an individual who, she takes full responsibility for her actions and is not denying anything. I think that shows a great judgment of character. And I, you know, I'm not saying that people deserve a second chance, but I think someone can own their mistake. I will support them.
Excellent. Counsel Benson?
Thank you. I will be supporting the reappointment for, of Donna Crocker, and I watched the O and A meeting and also the meeting prior. People are not perfect. We are all imperfect people. We deserve grace. And when someone owns up to their mistakes, they deserve grace. And she has served this city and moved the Waterways Board forward in many great ways. And as, and as my counselor, counselor, I almost called you Counselor Gro. Counselor Gro has said, like, they are volunteering for free. And we, we need volunteers on our boards and commissions, as we've made changes with, with our ordinances for boards and commissions, because we don't have enough people to reach a quorum. So I will, again, support Donna Crocker, and I believe that we, as a quote says, "People who are not perfect but have flaws and make mistakes because they are human, and we all deserve grace." Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Counsel Benson. Counsel Grace?
Hi, thank you. You know, I spoke with Donna, you know, and I asked her some pretty straightforward questions, and she at no point in time made any excuses for a mistake that she made. She owned it, she accepted it, and she came before O and A and right off the bat, you know, addressed the elephant in the room without hesitation. You know, whatever else happened with any other issue that Counsel Worthley has, we are not, you know, I am not knowledgeable of all of that, and I would like to just leave it out of the equation if possible. You know, as Counselor Benson said, none of us are perfect. You know, there is no lack of people in this community who complain about the way things are done, and very few people actually step up and throw their hat in the ring. and very few people actually step up and throw their hat in the ring. And I think if somebody is willing to do that and willing to own up to their mistake, then we should accept that, and we should start kind of with a clean slate. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you, Counsel Grace. At this point, I am going to close discussion.
I haven't spoken on a motion yet.
The motion is going to be read in a second.
But I haven't spoken on a motion yet.
We haven't read the motion.
Oh, everybody here has.
We have to rewrite it because you just pulled off the consent agenda.
Okay.
As a board member. So the motion is for Donna Crocker to be extended on the Waterways Board with her term to expire 2/16/2028, and I so move.
Okay.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
On the motion? Thank you. I'd like to clarify a few things. I don't think that my reputation of supporting volunteerism and volunteers should ever be questioned. I think we all give a lot of credit to our volunteers, and it's something that's very important to me as well. I came to the meeting as being asked to sit in because there was an illness, and it was about 4:45, 5 o'clock that I learned that. So I didn't have time to call people in advance and do some research. And I was told at the meeting that the person owned up to a mistake, which I didn't even know what the mistake was until afterwards. I'd heard about it, but I didn't know what she was actually referring to. The question for me is not being unforgiving or not being kind or not being graceful. That's not the issue at all. There's accountability question, and there's a liability question. If any city employee was drinking on the job, they wouldn't be working any longer, okay? If any of us were drinking on the job, we wouldn't be, we would lose our jobs, okay? And so when that happens in a formal meeting where, you know, someone can say it was a mistake, it was a mistake that they got caught doing that, I know you're going to call a point of order, but I'd like to finish my point. So saying I own up to my mistake without actually acknowledging what the mistake is, I think that's not actually being accountable. Then there's the question of, you know, we have children who are serving on our boards and commissions. Like the one that you represent, you know, we've got to look towards, okay, what is the role model effect that we're having of people drinking on the jobs? That's one thing. You can't be in a formal meeting and consuming alcohol.
All right, we do have a point of order on the floor.
I think Counsel Wirthly is taking the opportunity to go into the issue, even though Donna Crocker's not here to defend herself or to speak in her own accord. You asked that this not be delved into, and Counsel Wirthly is delving into it, I think with great glee, and I find it offensive.
Without any objection, I'd like to call the roll on the vote, please. And this is my roll call.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Wirthly. Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes.
Counselor Majota. Counselor Memhard.
Enthusiastically, aye.
Vote is seven in favor, one opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. Thank you to the administration, to all our volunteers for being here tonight. We expect great things from all of you, and hopefully you guys have something fun to do later. And Holly, I'll be calling you tomorrow. All right, with that being said, next on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
The January 23 Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report.
Excellent, thank you. Counsel Wirthly, the floor draws.
I'm sorry, give me 10 seconds here. Okay, so I had the great opportunity to attempt to fill in for Counsel Memhard. I can tell you, Scott, that I may have filled your shoes that night, but I could never fill your role. You've been a great mentor, and did the best I could. And I'm going to continue that with reading the motions for tonight's Budget and Finance report. So on, let's see, City Council Order 2025-003, which was introduced by Counselors Gross, Nolan, Majota, Amending Beach and Stageport Regulations Appendix A. The Committee Recommendation on a Motion by Counsel Wirthly Seconded by Counsel Nolan, the Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent to amend the council order by increasing all non-resident online weekday, weekend, and holiday purchases by $10. And I so move, and then we'll discuss the actual fee increases.
Second.
I'd like to waive the reading of the minutes on this. Counsel Wirthly, if you want to give a quick synopsis of it, and then I'll join in as a sponsor, then Counsel Majota again as well.
Thank you. So it's in our packet, it's online if people want to see it. Just to be clear, this is not increasing any fee for a resident. It's literally the opposite of that. The proposal that came in as a council order was to increase beach fees for every kind of vehicle, van, bus, motorcycle, passenger vehicle, by $5. And in the discussion, sorry, $5 for weekends, holidays, and weekdays, in the discussion at the Budget and Finance Committee, we decided to go to $10 more. The proposal initially was going to bring in about $345,000 to $350,000 estimated in additional revenue. By going to $10, we expect and hope that this brings us additional $700,000 into the city budget. If we find that somehow people are saying that's too much money and they decide not to come to the beach, we can obviously go lower at that point if necessary. But this here would do a lot to, well, start filling the gap that the mayor said that there's a budget deficit of $3 to $4 million. This certainly does not replace $3 to $4 million, but it's one of those things where every bit helps. So the motion on the table is to accept the $10 per day increase on weekdays, weekends, and holidays for all vehicles. And if anybody has any questions about the decision to go from $5 to $10, or if any questions about the process, I'd be happy to answer them as best I could.
Excellent, thank you, Counsel Wirthly. Counsel Majota, as a sponsor in this, would you like to speak?
I think my biggest concern with going, originally I did want the $5, where you said it would be about $300,000 increase. I don't want to not have people come and then react. I think the reason why I said $5 is, let's see how it works. Nice little increment by listening to our fellow constituents and brainstorming how we can bring in revenue to the city. I thought $5 was a good first-time increase. Then if that goes good and our numbers are the same, I have no problem resubmitting this again for the following year with another $5 increase, where we can see that $10 increase within two years rather than just one.
Excellent. So I did some research on this over the past few years, as we have dabbled in this. There's a lot of beaches up and down the South Shore that are anywhere from $65 to $100 a day. A $10 increase for going to a beach in Gloucester, I don't think is going to change someone's mind as far as saying, you know, it's $10, you know, well, I'll pay $55 and I'll go to Colasset instead of paying $45 and go to Gloucester. We have a few things in line with that. A, our traffic is wonderful. We have no traffic issue for people to come to the beach. People going to Cape Cod focus on traffic all day long, trying to get there, trying to be there. At $45, we're a bargain. We don't charge people to go to our beaches. You can walk on, it's free. We have shuttles from the train station. We have shuttles from Stageport that you can park at a reduced rate at Stageport and still take a shuttle to Good Harbor Beach. The idea of putting five to six or up to nine people, depending on what size car you have, for $45 a day for a weekend or a holiday is very inexpensive. I mean, you can get, lift tickets range from $100 to $150 to go skiing for the day per person. You just can't go to a mountain and bring a picnic with you and sit inside a cafeteria or restaurant and eat. In Gloucester, you can bring all the food you want. You can stop at any of our local stores. You can grab lunches at Vigilio, Scalpani's, Andy's Variety, you can go to Cafe Bishko. Wherever you desire, you have reservations, no rush to get there. You can set up with your family, you can enjoy some of the cleanest beaches in the city. There are more expenses for the city. We have the pipe and plover issue. That's anywhere up to $50,000 for observers that we have to pay because of pipe and plovers. We have the lost area of the high tide marks because of pipe and plovers. We're not allowed to use equipment on Good Harbor Beach. It has to be pick-sticked every day by hand by the DPW at the expense of being able to go out and take care of potholes and other issues that they would normally be working on. Can you imagine going to Good Harbor every day when you get up and go to work and have a pick-stick and a bucket and bags and trying to fish out diapers and then pick up needles if you see them, or trash, or any of that type of stuff? We're inconvenienced by unfunded mandates because of the plovers, which cost money, and we still maintain our beaches in a pristine manner. That I'm proud as a Gloucester citizen to say that our beaches are worth $10 more a day for what we have to put into it to offer the opportunity for you to come to your family and to enjoy some of the most fantastic views, weather, and people in all of New England. So I'm happy to support the $10. Motion. Counsel Benson.
I appreciate your passion on this and what you are putting forward. I will not be supporting this, but I do understand where you're coming from or where other counselors are coming from, but I do think people will see this price and will see prices for other beaches, and they'll choose to go to those beaches if they're closer to them. I think that having a lower price leads to more people coming, and you're going to have it booked completely out for two, three, four weeks at a time, I think, as you just alluded to, Counselor Majota, that you were saying you were interested in the $5. I think $10 is too much, so I just will not be supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Benson. Counsel Grace.
Thank you. You know, people wouldn't bat an eye driving through the Starbucks drive-thru on the way to Good Harbor Beach and spending, you know, $50 on coffee and iced tea or whatever. So, you know, I'm sorry, $10 is just a drop in the bucket to what people spend on anything and everything. And regardless if you went up $5, $10, $15, it's still the cheapest form of entertainment for a family that there is. So I will support it.
Excellent, thank you, Counsel Grace. Counsel Wirthly.
Thank you, and I appreciate the sort of behavioral economics questions that come up. If it's too much, do we lose people, and then we have an issue with no money coming in. But one piece of information we don't have, and I can only give you some personal experience. I worked at Good Harbor Beach for five years. We would sell three or 400 tickets that we would sell for other towners, as we call them, non-residents, and we'd have 2,000 or 3,000 people who wished they could get in. Now with the reservation system, we don't have those people coming and driving around, but, you know, you've got to wonder, when people book that last spot and we're full, how many other people would have gone online and said, "I would have been happy to pay to go"? And then the other piece that we need to keep in mind is that every time we put a request into the mayor, every time we want to see something done in the city, there's a price tag for that. And so as we go into our budget season, and, you know, we hear it's going to be a tight budget. Well, if this passes, we have a dollar number we can work with that's higher than, if $5 is there, it's higher than we've got to work with from last year. If it's $10, it's even more. And so I appreciate that if we have an experience where we don't fill the lots as much as we would, we would revisit this in September to go down $5, but I support the $10. And also, there's some, for example, buses, 26 people on a bus. Going up $10 is $2.06 per person more, right? I don't know that we want to separate that and make that only $5 more. So I will be supporting the motion out of B and F for the $10 because Good Harbor and Winger Shaken Stageport are worth it, and because we need the money.
Excellent, thank you, Counsel Wirthly. Counsel Gilman actually had her hand in the purse.
Counsel President, with your permission, may I ask Jill Cahill to come up to the microphone? I have a question, a very detailed question.
Okay, Cahill.
Thank you.
To the left when he had the chance.
Too detailed, I don't know if I'll have an answer, but I'll try.
Okay, so here's my question. I know that the first year we did our parking, our automated parking, we did not offer like a rain check. Can you explain the way we modified that right now? Because this might have an impact on how I vote right now. So.
So the concept of the banking days?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't think it, that we are still working through the how that was going to work in the system. I know this was a big, you'll take it the right microphone in here. So I don't think we actually, that has rolled out yet, but the concept being that you can bank a day, so if you cancel within a certain amount of time in advance, you can use that reservation for another day. But that was not successful. The company, the software company behind the scenes was not successful at getting that to work properly last year, but it's still in discussions for this coming season. So I don't have details on it.
Because I, that was kind of a, that was
I can understand.
Going to substantiate my support of the $10, because to me, that if you were able to get that, that's fair. But in the old way, if you were being proactive and all of a sudden it poured, you know, you'd be throwing out quite a bit of money.
I will say as one skier to another skier, in reference to Counselor Nolan's, we all pay our $100, $150 tickets, right? And if it's a snowy day, an icy day, very rarely do you get a nice day on a ski mountain, you know, that you don't get the option to, to kind of bank that day and get that back. So I'll just put that out there to, if you're making the comparison to other recreational activities, Counselor Grace, I thoroughly, you know, appreciate your reference. I have a teenage daughter, so I understand the cost of Starbucks well. So I think if you're comparing it to other recreational activities, it's important. And I will say, I think the most important piece to keep in mind here is that we are not charging for access to the beach. We are charging for access to the parking. You may access our beaches in a variety of ways, including walking, including bus service. So I think it's really important for the public to understand that the cost of access is to the parking, but the access to the beach remains free.
And I do hope that you're able to negotiate that, because I think that that is the right thing to do. Okay, great, thank you.
Jill, if you could just stay there for one second, please. Counsel Gilman, thank you very much. Counselor Grob.
Just quickly, when was the last time that we raised rates on parking?
We actually did, we did adjust these since I've been in this role. So we have our, we did adjust these rates in the last
In the last three to five.
Three to five years, something like that, since I've been with the city.
Thank you.
It wasn't, it definitely wasn't this council, but I definitely was here, so.
Counsel Memhard.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jill, for your insights there. I 100% agree with Counselor Nolan and Counsel Grace in their comments that our beaches are a rare jewel for the city, and we invest a lot of money in making them accessible and clean, maintaining them properly. And I think we're 100% entitled to increase our rates the way we have proposed at Budget and Finance. I think it's a wise move, and with a tight financial picture ahead of us, it's one proactive step that we can take that actually does make a difference. And I think we should be embracing this with confidence that people recognize the value of our beaches and they're willing to be, will be willing to be paying for it as we're requesting. Thank you.
So thank you, Counsel Memhard. Counsel Gro, please.
Okay, I've been riding the fence on this one. Part of me is very concerned about making things unaffordable for people of lower economic means to enjoy our beaches and all, but I think that if we can get an accurate assessment somewhere midsummer or towards the end of the summer about how our beaches are being utilized and whether or not this is causing a problem in terms of ticket sales, I'd be, you know, be grateful to get that kind of information. I'm inclined to support this because we don't charge to get on the beach. I would hate to see us go to a ban system where people pay by the person, so they'd be paying for parking and for access. But I do also want to see a little bit more of our resources spent on the beaches, more attention paid to the moby mats and those kinds of things, and utilize some of the resources that the beach generates to do even more for the beach, because it is a treasure in the city. And I do think that while I'm biting a little bit on the $10 increase, I still think that we can use that appropriately and make it work. And if not, we'll reassess at the end of the season.
Thank you, Counsel Grob. Anybody else? Counsel Benson?
Thank you. If I may, just, Jill, just quickly, you talked about buses, and I If I may, Jill, just quickly, you talked about buses and I do, I'm not supportive of this, but beyond that, I do think there is, if there is a better opportunity to get more people to maybe take the train. I know people that live in Boston and they would love to take the train, but there's a, it's sometimes difficult to get from the train to Good Harbor to Winger Sheik. But has there ever been a discussion, I know you mentioned buses, has there ever been a discussion to have some sort of shuttle, maybe not every day, but maybe looking in the future where we could have, maybe it's not every hour, but it's maybe once in the morning, once in the evening, to go from the main train station, railroad to Good Harbor and to Wingo?
Yeah, I'm sure, because the mayor and I were talking about this, he is supportive of the increase, but also, you know, how else, traffic in general, right? How else can we get people to the buses? He sits, he's the chair of the board of CADA, so I'm sure he will initiate that discussion. Currently, there is the shuttle that goes from Stageford Park through town at the downtown stops to make sure that we also award people that opportunity and to Good Harbor Beach. So that shuttle's available and I'll make sure he initiates that with the CADA board. And I do want to also just remind everybody that the stops along the bus route also, like I said, do go downtown. And the other initiative we're working on with our contractor, our vendor for the beach parking, is links to Discover Gloucester and the Chambers so that we can redirect if you can't get a reservation at the beach that day because that is more of our problem. We don't have a problem selling out the beach. Here's all the other great, incredible, fun things to do in the city of Gloucester.
Thank you, and I appreciate the mayor initiating that discussion to maybe say, "Could we do that?" Maybe it's not possible, but maybe we could look at it. So thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. So we have a motion, we've had our discussion.
One more comment that, you know, whenever we add more services, we need the money to pay for it.
Thank you, Counsel Grace. So that being said, you can read the motion.
Committee Recommendation on a Motion by Counsel Worthley, Seconded by Counsel Nolan. The Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor.
Wait, no, we've already read that.
Budget and Finance.
Yeah, go ahead, Jill.
No, it's already been read.
It's already been read, yeah, so ready for a vote.
Need a reminder or we vote?
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
No.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, one opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. And Continue with the committee report? We can continue with the committee reports from Budget and Finance.
Okay, so the next one is a grant.
Good night, Jill.
I'll read the motion, then I'll give a little narrative. A motion of Counsel Worthley, seconded by Counsel Nolan. The Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent. To recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, 53A, a state grant from the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game, Division of Marine Fisheries, a fiscal year 25 Great Marsh Green Crab Trapping Grant Program in the amount of $13,000 for the purpose of providing a program to legally collect, remove, and dispose of European green crabs from coastal marine and estuarine waters within its jurisdiction. The grant period is through June 30, 2025, with no local match required, and I so move.
Second.
Yes.
Let you know that Rebecca Visnick
If there's any questions.
Yep. So if I may?
If you may, you'll be narrative.
Yep, so as Counsel Gilman mentioned, Rebecca Visnick is online, but to save her the time, she did a nice presentation at Budget and Finance. This is a multi, we've had this grant before. There really isn't a natural market for green crabs, for people to catch them and sell them, so the state has offered this grant because green crabs are invasive species that is part destroying our marshes. And so this is a way to say, we're making it, there is a financial incentive for people to be in the industry of collecting green crabs so that we can protect our marshes, which has much positive impact on our environment, clam shell beds, general safety. So that's why I was happy to support it at the committee and we thank Rebecca for her hard work as Shellfish Constable, I think that's her official title.
Thank you, Counsel Worthley. Counsel Gro.
Like always, we've had this grant before and I'd just like to take the opportunity to steer people over to YouTube and take a look at Newbar Alexanian, who's a local photographer and filmmaker, amazing, amazing person. His recipe for disaster, Green Crabs in the Great Marsh, outlines, and it's only six minutes long, outlines the dangers of this invasive species and is well worth a watch.
Thank you, Counsel Gro. Any other discussion or comments? Counsel Benson?
Thank you. I will be supporting this, but if I could ask the Shellfish Warden just quickly, if you could just, in like a minute, just talk about this, how this endangers the shellfish industry, the green crabs?
Rebecca, did you hear that? Sorry, Rebecca, we're bringing you in now.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So green crabs are voracious predators of juvenile shellfish, so they can go through 40 to 80 juvenile shellfish a day. They reproduce three times a year as opposed to our native species of crabs, so they're reproducing exponentially, they're eating a lot of our juvenile shellfish, and the way that they interact with the environment, they're actually causing some damage to the marsh habitats as well.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion or questions?
Well, Rebecca's at the podium, I just have a quick question. My understanding is that there are natural predators that are helpful in controlling green crabs amongst that are sea otters or otters. Is your experience that any of the otter populations we have on Cape Ann is contributing to controlling them?
We do not, we have river otters, I believe, but we don't have sea otters on the East Coast. We do have some animals that will prey on them, but because they're not an existing part of our ecosystem, they've come in and have kind of taken over different niches. They're not as common of a prey item as the native species would be. So the equivalent crab species that have been here are still going to get preyed upon more so than the green crabs. We also have the issue as well, as our native species generally only spawn once a year as the green crabs will spawn three or more times a year.
Thank you. I have watched a pair of otters, I don't know if they're sea otters or otherwise, in the marsh beyond Farnham's.
Yep, we get a lot of river otters, they're really fun to see.
Yes, they are indeed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Memhard, thank you, Rebecca. Is there any other questions? All right, here are none, this will be by rule call.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes, aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
Chandering with the Budget and Finance Report, the next three motions are for essentially the same issue, and I'll speak to all of them after the first one's on the table. On a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Nolan, the Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council, sorry, that the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, 53A, a federal grant from the U.S. Department of Treasury passed through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts from the COVID-19 CVRF-MP Coronavirus Relief Fund in the amount of $2,680,387, the necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. The grant period is from March 4, 2020, through December 31, 2021, with no local match required, and I so move.
Second.
All righty.
On the motion?
On the motion.
Thank you. So this is not additional money that we're receiving, this is not any newfound saving grace to patch up our budget, and this was, today is partly an accounting, record-keeping step to make sure that all our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. This was brought to us, brought forward to us from Kenny Costa, our auditor, who was put in charge of this by former CAO Jim Distino, and he just wants to be certain that everything is done right. And so I'd love to say we've got this extra money to spend and work with, but we don't, it's a record-keeping measure, and that's why it's a very easy discussion. So that's it, I'd be supporting it.
Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, it's by rule call.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
Next, on a motion myself, seconded by Counsel Nolan, the Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, 53A, a federal grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, known as FEMA, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, known as MEMA, for the administration of COVID-19 vaccination in the amount of $23,633.95. The grant period is from March 27, 2020, through July 31, 2023, with no local match required, and I so move.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments to this? Counsel Benson?
I had a question maybe for Jill, if you don't mind me asking, looking at this, oh yeah, sorry, just looking at this and understanding decisions that happened at the executive today, and there's discussion also possibly of an executive order abolishing FEMA, I'm just wondering what kind of concept, like would the city be on the hook for money if that, that could happen? I just, I'm just thinking out loud, but also since we're here, is there gonna, would there be financial consequence? Would we be on the hook for this money if, say, that happened?
I have no way to answer that.
Okay.
As you know, because of, it's an ever-changing landscape right now, I would, I'm gonna assume so the COVID, the COVID money that we've spent, that's all under, the ARPA money's all under contract, this, the funding, all this funding is under contract, so that's not something we're putting energy into worrying about right now. But I mean, in these uncertain times, I'm not sure I can answer anything definitively that involves the federal government.
Okay, well, I appreciate, no, I appreciate it, and I, just looking at this and thinking of FEMA.
We don't, you know, I think Counsel Worthley spoke to Kenny, we've spoken to our general counsel, Suzanne Egan, I mean, we don't, their CFO currently with current funding that's spent or under contract, we are not concerned, are pending grants like a community development block grant, things like that, that we're expecting money, those are a different topic. But again, everything's uncertain.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. And Counsel Benson, this is money that's already been spent.
I understand that, I'm just trying to understand the, because like, I under, there is discussion to abolish FEMA in a few days, so I just want to just see what could happen. And I, and I think Jill answered as best she can, and I appreciate that candor, thank you.
The next one also is the same type of
Yeah, and that's why I knew, and that's why I was just wanting to get that.
Counsel Gro.
I just want to, I want to back up your concern over this because while this is money that's already been spent, and we expect that this money will come in, if the federal government is successful in its effort to derail significant grant funding to states and localities, this is exactly the kind of stuff that's going to come in and wreak havoc on our budgets and our ability to provide services and public safety and other areas that we don't have any idea right now, the extent of the damage that this could cause. So I think you're right to be concerned, I think we should definitely agree and vote these in and get the money as quickly as we can
Yes.
to sort out our budgetary issues, but we're going to have much more to deal with coming forward.
And I appreciate, if I may, Counsel President, and thank you, Counsel Gro, and I really do appreciate Jill in understanding the fluidity of this. And just my, I'm just trying, I'm just thinking because there is discussion in the next few days of basically abolishing FEMA, so I just wanted to just think about this as we're going forward. So I appreciate
President.
me being able to ask these questions.
Counsel Worthley, I believe you're going to answer the same thing I was just going to say.
We have a motion on the table about money that's been spent, it's gone, it came in, it's out, and this is an accounting step to be sure that we have a record of having spent the money appropriately. As you can see, the grant period ended July 31, 2023, so we're not voting on, and I share your concern, but the business report today is accounting step to make sure that we have made sure we've got the record correct on how that money was spent.
Yes, yes, but there, there's always, there's contingencies, and I think we just need to be cautious. And that's why I agree with Counselor Gro is that we need to get this passed and move forward on it as quickly as possible.
All right, I'd like to bring in Kenny Costa. He has his hand raised, he can clarify some of this for us. Thank you, Kenny.
Good evening, counselors. I just want to let you know that all the monies of the COVID-19 grant, all the monies have been spent and they have all been received. We just received our last reimbursement of $673,000 within the last month, so all the monies have been received and they're all, you know, they're all been accounted for. So I just wanted to let the city council to be aware.
Excellent, thank you, Kenny. With that being said, this will be by rule call.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
On a motion of Counsel Worthley, seconded by Counsel Nolan, the Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, 53A, a federal grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, in response to the COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Grant Reimbursement, with a total of three fiscal awards for a total amount of $1,096,739. Grant period is from March 27, 2020, through February 14, 2025, with no local match required, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, it will be by rule call.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Aye.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
On a motion by myself, I'm sorry, I'd like to ask, will you take a two-minute recess?
Yeah.
We can vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Paul.
Sorry.
Who's seconded, or if not, who's seconded?
It would take longer to vote on this.
All right. Who's seconded?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gilman.
Aye.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yep.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, we're in recess for five minutes. Just a reminder, the microphones are not muted right now.
Back in the old days, you had to press a button for them to activate, so they'd be off if you weren't pressed and on if it was. You might see me like doing this sometimes, it's an old habit still.
What did people just say? Someone wrote me a love letter.
Is that how you get your tan?
Yeah. Yeah. We're back from recess. Counsel Worthley, you may continue. We're back from recess.
So we have a number of acceptance of grants. We're very blessed to have many people in the community donating, and in different departments that have received it, we have to accept them. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a consent agenda motion. Wait.
You said, grants or these just donations?
Donations. Thank you for the clarification.
No worries. It's, it's, no, it's okay. It's, I just wanted to just make sure.
Donations, I'm sorry. There's a number of donations, and a suggestion was made that we combine them in a consent agenda. So what I'm gonna do is make a motion that we accept all of the motions from Budget and Finance in one motion. And I'm gonna list through the grants, though, so we can have a brief discussion of that, but we don't have to roll call.
Donations.
Sorry, donations. So we have to do a roll call vote for each, we do a roll call vote on the whole thing. Sorry. So do I make a motion that we accept it? I make a motion that we accept all of the grants, all the donations via consent agenda that are offered in the minutes from Budget and Finance.
Second.
Numbers fours through, um, hang on, you're heading, yes, fours through, four through nine. So a motion on accepting them, but I have to also read them, so is that, are we taking a motion to have a consent agenda or a motion that it is a...
May I, may I help? So typically, what Counsel Memhard does is that he just reads the tagline, and then he asks if anybody would like to remove one of those. He makes that the consent agenda.
Okay.
So in that way, we can discuss something that just jumps out, but you do need to read the little line as you decide.
I was planning that. I thought we didn't need to put the motion on the table first. But, okay, let me read each of number four through nine. These are donations we've received. First one is memorandum from the DPW Director regarding a cash donation for the Cemetery Commission, and that was from Philip Austin Bray for two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we had a memorandum from the Veteran Service Director to support KPN Veteran Services in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from Edward, I'm sorry, Edward Camo, Gloucester World War II Memorial Fund, and Greg and Kelly Berger for a total of three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Memorandum from the Archives, Archives Committee for donation of five hundred dollars from the Daughters of the American Revolution, KPN Chapter. A memo from the Public Works Financial Manager for the acceptance of two hundred and fifty-six dollars for the Gloucester Historical Burial Browns, and I don't see that it says there who that donation was from. And then the last one is a director from, I'm sorry, memorandum from the Director of Elder Services requesting acceptance of donations in total of two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, the donations from the KPN Savings Bank, Richard Semple, Peter LaFata, John Perry, Kathleen Palmfret, Rochelino, Paul Boucher, Arlene O'Neil, Brenda Burns, and Antonio Grillo, again, for a total of two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the last one is from a memorandum we received from the Department of Public Works. The Director was asking us to accept a donation for the Langford Street Cemetery in the amount of five hundred dollars from Carol Steel Insurance Agency. Those are all the donations, and the motion is on accepting all of them.
Second.
All right, and this will be by, any discussion or comments?
Just thank you for all the managers that brought those to us and all the community members who have donated.
Uh, this will be by roll call, please.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Mujota.
Aye.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
The vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The motion passes.
The last thing from Budget and Finance is we can't wait to have you back, Scott and Tony, so you don't have to endure my reading of motions. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Jeff.
Excellent. Next up, Madam Clerk.
The January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five Special Ordinances and Administration Meeting.
All right, Counsel Mujota. And again, this is something that we've all had in front of us, and what we're looking to get done, and I'd like to ask if we can waive the reading and call and just go by motion. All right, without any... Go ahead, Counsel Mujota.
Committee recommendation on a motion by Counsel Worthley, seconded by Counsel Mujota. The Ordinance and Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council vote to authorize the mayor to petition the General Court for the special act sustainably as follows, and I so move.
Uh, any questions or, or discussion? Seeing none, it'll be by roll call.
Discuss what it is in general.
Uh, go ahead.
Counsel.
You want to do it? You're, you're on the meeting.
Um, yeah, I gotta quickly sum this. So the city's general counsel asked us to accept this act. It is to, I believe it is to reduce the number of people on the Fisheries Commission, if I remember, so that we have an active committee. So it's pretty straightforward. If there's any questions, we can dig into it, but it's recommended by the administration.
It'll help them reach a quorum.
That being said, do we have the roll?
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gilman.
Aye.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Mujota.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The motion passes.
Excellent. Next on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five Planning and Development Standing Committee Report.
We got nothing.
That being said, next on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing, twenty twenty-five, Number One, Petition to Reduce the Speed Limit on Salt Island Road and Palfrey Road in accordance with GCO Chapter twenty-one, Section twenty-one dash eighty-seven, and twenty-one dash eighty-eight, and MGL Chapter ninety, Section nineteen.
All right, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask for anybody speaking in favor. Counsel Memhard, would you like to say anything on this?
Absolutely. I don't know if there, there should be several members of the Salt Island neighborhood in, in attendance, but this has been a long, long, complicated road between the status of these roads being private and going back and forth with the Massachusetts T O T. The members of the Salt Island Safety, Road Safety Committee have been very diligent, persistent on this, trying to reduce the traffic of their neighbors and all the developed delivery people in the neighborhood, and then a lot of beach traffic as well on Salt Island and Palfrey, Palfrey Roads. So this has been a long sought and eagerly desired step to creating more safe roads in this neigh, in this neighborhood.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor, this is obviously an end to a great project down there, which has been well worth taking. Is it... Yep.
Here, just...
Yeah, and I've, I've asked if anybody else would like to speak in favor. You don't have to. We know where you are.
Come up and talk. Come on, you guys. Come on.
That's right.
Come talk to us.
Leave them alone.
These are my old neighbors. They're awesome.
They don't wanna talk.
They're not old in age. They're just old friendly neighbors. They're just happy. Name and address.
My name is Gary Morgan. I live at twenty-seventh Salt Island Road, and since the roads have been repaved, beautifully done, smooth and, and slick, and the traffic has just been flying by. I work in my garage quite a bit, which is very near the road, and the traffic has just been insanely fast going by there. It's a real safety concern for pedestrians, for cars backing out, for pets, anything. So when we saw this ordinance, which I think is, is brand new, that allows us to petition the City Council to reduce the traffic, we jumped on it. Jim represents Palfrey Road, and we got all the signatures required. I represent Salt Island Road, and the people on these roads are, as you can see, meet the requirements for sixty percent and, and more on Salt, on Salt Island Road. I will say, some of the signatures were rejected, I guess. They weren't verified, but I could verify all them, and if I did, that would be ninety-some percent on Salt Island Road. So, but in all fairness, we still met the sixty even without verifying those additional signatures. And, and the people that weren't verified, I could mention them to Val, and I think she'd know that. Yeah, the Hemen, they're, they are real, they have the authority to sign it. But anyway, uh, yeah, thank you.
Mike, please.
I'm Jim Niles. No relation to Niles Beach or Niles Pond. My family's been on Palfrey Road since nineteen fifty-two, and as Gary said, we've really had a problem with, not only in the summer, but also during the year round, actually. And we wanted to thank the committee for looking at this request, and we look forward to a positive vote. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all.
Here, here.
Uh, next up, is there anybody speaking in opposition? Seeing none online or in present? Is there any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
All right. Is there any counsel questions to the applicant or staff? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and have the motion. Counsel Mujota.
Move to motions, speed limit right here. Move to set the speed limit on Palfrey Road to fifteen miles an hour in accordance with GCO of Chapter twenty-one, Section twenty-one through eighty-seven, and twenty-one through eighty-eight, and MGL Chapter ninety, Section nineteen. Motion to move the speed limit on a private...
Second. All right. So on the first motion, this will be a roll call? We can discuss it, yes, as a discussion?
So because of the awesome betterment process that you established about nine years ago, Counsel Nolan, the roads are now beautifully paved, and with that comes cars that are speeding a lot more than, in the olden days, when there were always potholes. And I think that this is a great community opportunity for folks on private roads, and I think they did everything that they needed to do to get the signatures, and I'm excited that they stayed here for the whole night, and I really do appreciate it. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gilman. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Grow? Counsel Worthley?
Yes. Firstly, it's great to see the neighborhood coming out, and I also want to thank Counselor Memhard for organizing this. If you recall, this was a change that we made to the ordinance just last year, I believe, and I think it was Counsel Gross that brought this forward to make it easier for people who live on private roads to advocate for themselves. And I appreciate you did jump on this to get people to slow down. People drive way too fast, and I'm hopeful that lowering the speed limit, and it's great that this is a nice road. You don't want the potholes back to slow people down, but this might be helpful, and, and also hopefully we can have some enforcement of the newer, lower speed limit as well. Great work.
Thank you, Counsel Worthley. Anybody else? All right, with that being said, we'd like to have the roll.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Mujota.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Excellent. Counsel Mujota, motion, move to set the speed limit on the private portion of Salt Island Road to fifteen miles an hour in accordance with GCO Chapter twenty-one, Section twenty-one through eighty-seven, and twenty-one through eighty-eight, and MGL Chapter ninety, Section nineteen, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselors? All right, I'd just like to say that you guys are very lucky to have Counsel Memhard working with you. He's had quite a few very difficult private road situations that he's navigated through, found a way to get things done as a neighborhood, and to get things working the best they can for the, for the citizens. It is a lot of work. It's a lot of paperwork and footwork on your behalf as well. It's a partnership between you and your City Council to get things done, and the whole neighborhood looks wonderful. And the renditions for the New Good Haber Beach House, or whatever they used to call it, that looks like it's gonna be beautiful as well. So your neighborhood is, is moving along, and now hopefully it is move along a little slower. So, we have a roll.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Mujota.
Aye.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great night. Uh, next on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing, twenty-five, Number Two, Council Order twenty-four, Number twenty-five, from Counselors Worthley and Benson, amending CCO Section twenty-two dash two eighty-four service or loading zones by deleting Main Street, Northerly Side, from a point one hundred and thirty-two feet from the intersection of Short Street, for a distance of twenty-five feet in an easterly direction in front of sixty-two through sixty-four Main Street, and adding Main Street, Northerly Side, from a point one hundred and thirty-two feet from the intersection of Short Street, for a distance of twenty-five feet in an easterly direction in front of sixty-four to, through sixty, sixty-two through sixty-four Main Street, from eight o'clock A M. to five o'clock P M.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'd like to open the public hearing, and I ask if there's anybody in the audience to speak in favor, or anybody online? Seeing none, I'd like to defer to Counsel Benson.
Sure. I, I mean, Counselor Worthley was the one who brought this forward. I signed on after having this extensive discussion with Counselor Worthley, and also with the Chamber and businesses down there, that this was, this loading zone was not used twenty-four seven, if that's correct, Counsel Worthley, if I remember, and it's to move it fro, to have it from eight A M. to five P M. And then in the evening, it will free up an additional spot for our businesses on Main Street, specifically restaurants, who will be much appreciative of having this extra spot. And I know, hopefully, going down the road, we can be looking at all of these loading zones and possibly bringing more changes. And I appreciate you, Counsel Worthley, for putting this forward and speaking to our businesses on Main Street.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Benson. Counsel Worthley?
Very well said, Counsel Benson. I won't repeat what he said. I just wanna make a couple of other points. A loading zone, much like a handicap spot, is not for the business that it's in front of. Anybody can use it that loads something. And so even though the, this spot, I think I provided photos, is in front of all of us, and they don't need a loading zone at all. They have their own parking lot, and they would be happy with it to be gone completely. We wanna make sure, and we, and with Counsel Benson's help and the Chamber of Commerce, we went door to door and checked with businesses in the area, and there were some businesses that depend on that spot, even though it's not right in front of their business. And so we decided to look at just shortening the timeframe, because when you really think about deliveries for businesses, they don't come at night. They don't come on the weekends like this. And so we're taking up spots, and what we're going to do is a more comprehensive review of all of the spots that exist, and see if there's a few that we could dial back. It's one of those things where a little bit makes a big difference when you need a place to park. And so also with people who live downtown, especially more now than ever, at least on Main Street, you know, this is gonna free up a parking spot that might be otherwise used by, oh, taken up by a sign. And that sign there takes up three parking spots. This is no parking loading zone, and the impression is that it's twenty-four hours a day. That's not the case. And so not only we change the ordinance, we're gonna also request that the DPW Director adjust the signage so that people will know what we voted on. So we're happy to do this.
Thank you, Counsel Worthley. Is anybody speaking in opposition? Seeing none and online. Madam Clerk, is there any communications?
There are none.
All right. Is there any questions from counselors? All right, seeing none. I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report.
Committee recommendation on a motion by Counsel Worthley, seconded by myself. The Ordinance and Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-two, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section twenty-two through two eighty-four, service or loading zones by deleting Main Street, Northerly Side, from a point one hundred and thirty-two feet from the intersection of Short Street, for a distance of twenty-five feet in an easterly direction in front of sixty-two through sixty-four Main Street, and adding Main Street, Northerly Side, from a point one hundred and thirty-two feet from the intersection of Short Street, for a distance of twenty-five feet in an easterly direction in front of sixty-two through sixty-four Main Street, eight A M. to five P M., and I so move.
Second. All in favor? Or discussion? Oh, discussion. And then we'll do roll call.
Quick, Clerk, and Counselor Worthley, may I can, is to clarify that this, this 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, this includes the weekends as well, just so people understand?
Yes.
Okay. I understood that. I just want to make sure that folks understood that this, because some people may be thinking people are just getting deliveries Monday through Friday. But just to clarify, it also includes the weekend.
There are some businesses that are open on a Sunday that still need fresh food delivered and things like that.
Yep.
I would love to be more precise, but we don't want to have a business that's struggling not to get the delivery, so.
Fair enough. And I appreciate the clarification. I appreciate that, just so folks that are listening understand that, too.
Thank you.
All righty. So now we can go by roll call.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Aye.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
The vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The motion passes.
All righty. So I am going to take something out of order tonight. We're going to go to individual councils discussion, including reports by appointed councils to committees, which we have none, and then councils' requests to the mayor. And the reason we're doing this is that we're going to have a statement coming up from some people that won't be here for the following vote. So instead of bringing them back, yes, we're going to be doing, yeah, that's what, they're not going to be here. So instead of pulling them back. So we just want to go, we'll do the memorandum of the city clerk requesting city council set the September 16th. Oh, no, you guys can do that. I'm sorry.
Can, yeah. You don't need to be there.
So we might as well move to, let's do, yeah, let's do number two before we do that.
Which is the memorandum from the city clerk requesting city council set September 16, 2025, as the municipal preliminary election date.
Excellent. So that'll be by roll call.
Need a counselor to read it first.
Yeah. Move to set the date for the municipal preliminary election to September 16, 2025, and I move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Got it.
Seeing no discussion.
Is it always six weeks before the final election by definition? Or do we need to set it?
We have to set it. There was a special act. It's attached to the memorandum in the packet that I believe it has to be now at least six weeks prior to the general election.
Roll calls.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley. Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
The vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The motion passes.
Excellent. So we're going to go in order of roll call. So we'll start off, because I won't be first. I'll be last, so we'll start with Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. This isn't the disclosure. This is a council's request to the mayor.
That's correct.
Okay. So I have a number of requests that I've sent in, but there's one I just thought of on the way here. Well, actually, as we were talking about the beach stuff and the revenues and budget, there was a, we all know there was a teacher's strike. There was a settlement for, we approved $217,000 from the school committee, which had allocated $300,000 for the paraprofessionals. And we, the order was for 217,000. There was some, I'm just going to say misunderstanding, where there were some retired paraprofessionals who were promised that they would be paid through the, in retro, retroactively based on when they resigned or retired. And I don't know the numbers. It's probably under $20,000. I would like to ask, officially ask the mayor to try to revisit this. And not, we don't want to open up all contract negotiations all over again, but just a conversation.
So I have a point of order on this.
Always.
This, excuse me, Counsel Worthley, I have the floor. This is a matter between the negotiating teams and the teachers. This is not a matter that we, as another independent board of legislators, should get involved with. And we would be doing a disservice to our school committee and our school superintendent if we tried to get involved with this decision, because it's already being handled. They've heard it, and it's not our job. So I ask that you support my point of order, that this is not our purview to be discussing it. And if we're going to have this discussion right now, we need to have the superintendent and the school committee here. This is just not appropriate.
Mr. President, I have to comment. I'm sorry.
Okay. I do agree with thou that this has nothing to do with our committee. It does involve us as people. Jeff, if you want to submit that, could you please submit it and write it?
I'd be happy to.
And not orioles, none.
Okay. I have one other request. If I could address just the concept for a second, if I may, briefly?
I, no.
15 seconds.
No. I think that it's off base for us.
It's a request to the mayor. It's not asking the council to be involved. They say request to the mayor.
Send it to the mayor.
Okay. I didn't know that we were bound by rubbish rules of order on requests to the administration. It doesn't make sense. But the other request is we, there was some number, and I think it was in the $300,000 range, that I think we need to have full disclosure on for costs that were incurred and spent. And I'm not sure that there was proper appropriation or warrants for things like police details, public relation firms during that period. And I'd like to ask the mayor to disclose that money and that expenditure, and under what authority those decisions were made. It came to me from, from accounting standpoint, from our auditor, and from stuff that came from the school committee. So I think we should look at the numbers and just understand how those decisions were made and that money was spent. So that's it for requests, and I'll read my disclosure.
Excellent. I too support the second one. Thank you. Any, we're going to be a roll call. So who's after, Worth? Dylan Benson.
Counsel President. First off, I just want to have a few requests to the administration, just to see where we are with the senior tax work-off program. I'd like to see where we're at, if maybe we can get this going at a, just a few folks, maybe in the next fiscal year. Also, would like to request spoken to the constituent services director regarding some sidewalks that need repair, specifically Short Street and also Liberty Street as well. And also looking at some continued parking issues going on in the downtown area, specifically on Pleasant Street in and around the church and businesses where folks are parking for endless hours and taking up spots. And we're trying to figure out a way to alleviate that. But I just want to continue to put that on the administration's radar. And if I may, I just want to just take a few moments. Yesterday was 80 years since the liberation of Auschwitz. And I want to take a moment to remember the lives lost during the horrific Holocaust. Six million Jews and endless others were victims of the Holocaust. And we remember yesterday where over a million Jewish people were murdered at the Auschwitz concentration camp. And this was a year, 80 years, where many of the survivors were at Auschwitz. And this may be one of the final years that many of the survivors will be able to go. And I just hope we continue to remember their lives and root out antisemitism, and also root out denial of the Holocaust and distortion of the Holocaust. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
It's a hard act to follow. So I just have one thing I wanted to report. Three of us were at the MMA meeting Thursday, Friday, Saturday in Boston. Dylan and Counselor Gross. And it was, it was just such a, it was such a good opportunity to be there to listen to our Lieutenant Governor, a lot of keynote speakers talking about the importance of us having to have energy and excitement and, you know, focus on our jobs. I mean, it was just a really, really good conference. So I encourage you to look on the MMA website and see what is available from the conference in terms of executive discussions and from Adam Chapellane, and see what was discussed, because some of those talking points are very helpful. The one matter that I do want to share was from the business meeting with MIIA, our insurance carrier. And at the business meeting, which was on Saturday morning, they announced that it looks like healthcare is going to be trending at 14 and a half percent this year on an average, which is just overwhelming to hear. So, so we just, we need to be mindful of that and watch that closely as the budget season comes down the pipeline, because we were just shocked when we heard that number. The mayor was there. Tony was there. Dominique Hurley was there, and Jill. And we were just shocked. So anyway, just something to think about. But, but do read the materials. And if you have any questions, I attended a lot of the sessions. And when I can get, like, the PowerPoint slides, I'll make sure that I share them with everyone, because they were really helpful, things like overrides and dedics, so many good presentations. So I was honored to represent all of you there. It was a great conference.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Gilman. Counselor Grace.
Hi. Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of things. I was downtown today, parked on Dale Avenue, and fabulous job of cleaning the snow off the sidewalks. But if we could just perhaps take it one step further and clean off around the kiosks before somebody falls and is injured, because you have to kind of climb over. I mean, it's, a lot of it's melted now, but it's icy and a bit dangerous, especially for our elderly or uncoordinated like me. And my other thing is just, I'd like an update on the repair of the sidewalks on Rig Street. This is a request that I put in, you know, a year ago. And I don't really know what the status is right now. So thanks.
Counsel Grow.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. In response to Counselor Benson's memorial, memorialization of yesterday's events, we also attended on Sunday, along with the mayor and several members of the Human Rights Commission at Temple Habbat Akim, a seminar on antisemitism I thought was very enlightening, very interesting. And I think it's going to help inform the continued work that's being done on the antisemitism resolution that we've sent back to the Human Rights Commission. So I'm looking forward to that continuing, moving forward. I sent a note to the mayor right before this evening's meeting, asking him to keep us in the loop on federal grant and funding issues that may arise. Federal judge put a stay on the suspension of the grants until Monday. But as we know, things have been moving very quickly and very aggressively at the administration. And, you know, depending on how those, how that works out, whether or not it's even legal, there are potentially serious downsides for this community. And we're very hopeful that we don't lose the kind of funding that we need to keep services going and protecting our most vulnerable citizens and residents. So that's it for me. Everything else I submit online.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Grow. Counselor Memhard.
Two items, both of which have been mentioned tonight. And I just want to follow up on them on behalf of the constituents that have raised them. One I'd follow up on Dylan Benson's request to the mayor for an update on activating our senior workout program. I have constituents that are very eager to participate in that and are frustrated that there's nobody really responsive in the mayor's office to questions about when and how that program might get off the ground. And people offering to help organize getting it off the ground, but not finding a place to get a toehold. And secondly, following up on Mary Ann Boucher's requests, the community is owed an update on the schedule for the demolition and site improvement work at the East Gloucester School. I suspect not much has changed, but we just need an update on the timeframes that the demolition and the security of the site is anticipated for, from the contractors involved. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Memhard. I have no request for the night. Counsel Majota.
Just have two things. One I will go over if my dear Grace, I just got this phone call. I'd just like to clarify that the state law and city law for no parking signs within the crosswalks, especially in the downtown area on Washington Street, by George's and Tony's, I just want some clarification. I spoke to a few business owners down there, and they're just upset seeing they're losing a lot of parking down there. So we just want to clarify what the distance is from the crosswalk to the car space. Is it 20 feet? Is it 45 feet? So just clarification on that. Okay. And then I'm requesting a speed limit sign be put up or a slowdown sign where Captain Hooks was or around 447 Washington Streets. There've been a lot of speeding up in that area. So like a sign that put up there by the DPW to have people know the speed limit and to hopefully slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Majota.[1557.46] All right, so next up.
Just want to thank the administration and this council and the Department of Public Works for responding to Gail Goodhue who's coming to us from the council back in March and September. And I think especially Counselor Majota for a question as well, as the Ward Four counselor, to get railings installed at the Dorothy Talbot Rink. It's definitely an improvement for public safety and for grandparents who want to watch their kids play hockey or skate. They can navigate it more easily. And I just think that it's a team effort and that Grace specifically should be recognized for having the courage to come before us. So, and good work with DPW as well.
Excellent, thank you, Counsel Worthy. I will also like to state that in the process as well, Counselor Gilman was very vocal as well as asking the administration. So there's a lot of, a lot of help came through, but the end result is what needed to happen, and it worked. So everybody that was involved, and I thank you all.
I should have added, Counselor Gilman had put a request in as well on their behalf, so good job.
All right, so with that being said, next on the agenda, we have a Council, CC 25002. Gross, councilor ordered to set the date for a special election on April 24th, 2025, as required by Gloucester City Charter, Article Nine, Section Nine dash three A. We have some communications from some counselors on what's going to be happening. Like to each read or give a comment before you exit, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. After consulting with the State Ethics Commission regarding the council vote for a special election to determine whether or not to adopt the 3A zoning that was approved by the city council in the fall, it has been determined that I must again recuse myself. The special election is to either accept or not to accept the proposed zoning that was voted on by the council. It is in no way a vote for the, a yes or a no vote against the mandated 3A compliance because it is to determine the fate of the proposed zoning already on the table. The same reasons apply as for my original recusal. As my home is within one of the proposed districts, it is a conflict of interest because of a potential for monetary gain. I fully expect this decision will be accepted by my constituents with their full support. I am following the letter of the law. I avoid gray areas as they are murky and allow for decisions to be swayed by opinion and singular interpretation rather than by fact. My integrity and my respect for the law are important to me, and my recusal is for that reason and for that reason alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grace. Counselor Worthy.
Yes, thank you, I wasn't as organized in terms of writing a statement, so I'll do my best to say it. I had to apologize to the lawyer I was assigned to for this because I vehemently disagreed that this would be a conflict of interest. But after further discussion, she went back and got a second opinion. It's not, the, the question before us is on a special election, and the reason why it would be a conflict for anybody who lives in that area is simply we're voting for a potential benefit sooner than if it were on a regular election. And so if there is a benefit, i.e. if it passes, we would have been voting on a benefit that starts sooner, and that becomes the conflict. And so I respect that opinion and well on that. She also shared with me that as a city councillor, I can't be involved in advocating for a position. Doesn't mean I can't as an individual, but as a city councillor, I can't be involved in advocating. I didn't like that answer either, but I accept it. So with that said, I officially recuse myself. I also got it in writing and I sent it to the clerk, so if anybody wants to read the opinion, it's pretty lengthy, and I appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you, Counsel Worthy, and thank you, Counselor Grace, and you guys have a great evening. I hope doing the request to the mayor helped out instead of being called to come back up. Going to have a few moments, not necessarily recess, well, to exit, whether it is the vote, the possible discussion, or maybe just vote.
All right.
Good night.
So we can make a motion.
Go ahead.
Move to set the date for a special election on April 24th, 2025, as required by the Gloucester City Charter, Article Nine, Section Nine dash three A.
Excellent, second.
There you go. Move to the second. Move along.
Any discussion or comments?
Yeah, I got some.
Counselor Gilman.
So this date is very important for many reasons. Number one, we need to get this done before the next fiscal year, which begins on July 1st. And some of the opportunities that we have in front of us, if we were to hold off, could be taken by someone else. And we're hoping that although they're not earmarked for us, because we have to be compliant and right now that there's a delay to the effective date anyway, holding off longer than what we need to do is a problem. Second, it's a problem because if it doesn't pass on April 24th, then we'll have enough time to modify what we're recommending in terms of compliance and zoning and get that in prior to the effective date. So in fact, I think for those reasons, it's imperative that we, that we honor this date. And so I will be supporting this, and I, I know that Grace has some numbers to share as well in terms of how much a special election is going to cost us, and that's appreciated. But I'll let somebody else have the floor. Thank you.
Counselor Grow.
I was going to actually suggest that we talk about the cost real quickly because there's some other considerations that we should bring up in this discussion. And then I'd like to go back to some, some of the justifications why this date was set and the, the expectations of what we need to accomplish before July 14th.
Before we go into the cost, can I ask, is there any other questions or discussion besides cost? See none? We're on to the numbers. Postage.
So the estimated cost for a special election is $36,200. The cost of ballots would be $5,604.84. That was just quoted earlier, last week. State law does require a ballot for every registered voter, so that's what we got the quote on. The cost of police details, which is required by law, is $9,258.73. That can fluctuate a little bit depending on what police officers are, are selected for that detail. The cost of election workers would be projected to be $13,300. The cost of programming for the DS 200 tabulator and the flash card programming is $2,350. And the auto mark machines, which are the handicapped accessible machines, would cost $1,000 to program. Cost of custodial overtime, which is based on the November election, is $1,563.75. The cost of cell phones for the wardens at the precincts would be $78.52. Cost of staff overtime is $2,321.22. This is based on the 2024 elections. It's likely to be less for a special election because there won't be as many, like, extended hours. The cost of facility rentals is $100 per precinct that we rent. So that would be the Magnolia Library Center and Our Lady of Good Voyage Youth Center. The cost of supplies would be between $300 and $528. That difference is depending on whether or not we have early voting and the pole pad labels that we use are expensive. So at a minimum, it would be about $300. And that brings us to our cost of a special election, which again is approximately $36,200. When, $36,200. When it comes to the cost of postage for vote by mail, it, it really depends on how many people request vote by mail ballots. Right now, the cost to mail a ballot is 97 cents. In September of 2023, when the city voted to offer vote by mail, or actually did not vote to not have it, we mailed out 112 vote by mail ballots. And for the November election, we mailed out 248 vote by mail ballots. So we're looking at, you know, about $500.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Grow.
I do, I just want to, I, I want to take a few minutes just to just explain a little bit about why that date was chosen. You've already opened up the door on that. It's going to be a Thursday, which is not a typical day that we hold an election. It's Thursday because those are longer hours for the city that there are, so that would reduce overtime. It's on a Thursday, on the 24th, because it will not then conflict with schools being, needing to be closed for the, for the elections. We've already had enough school closures going on. There's, everyone is well aware that this is a spring break day. And while that is unfortunate, we are going to have early voting and we will have mail-in voting. So there's really no excuse for people to not be able to vote if they, if they choose, if they choose to do so, which I hope they do. And of course, we're doing, trying to do everything we can to reduce disruption in the city via the school closures, cost reductions as much as possible for, for staff. But there's some other things that we need to be considered, and, and Counselor Gilman's already broached some of those. And that is that we need to produce, because of the referendum, because of the petition, the city's now in a position that we have to resubmit a, an action plan by February 13th, 2025. And then we need to initiate and have zoning, effective zoning in place by July 14th, or we become non-compliant. People were asking, why don't we have this in September, why don't we wait for November? As long as we remain out of compliance, we remain ineligible for these very important infrastructure grants, financing opportunities. And holding off until September or November would just delay that process. All the grants that we have sitting on the table that we can't utilize right now are going to be reprogrammed on July 1st. If we don't use them, they will go away. So it's our hope, I think, and the hope of the council, that the people turn out to vote, vote correctly, and approve the proposal that was drafted by the city, by the planning board and unanimously approved by the city council. But that's the timeline. And if we don't, if we don't prevail on April 24th, we're going to have two months basically to re-initiate the process of resending this to the planning board, having public hearings, a redraft of a proposal, coming back to the city council, and having public hearings before we then vote again, all before the deadline of July 14th. So there's a lot of stuff in play at the, at the moment, a lot of things have to come together to, to be successful. I'm, I'm sorry that we, the city is in the position of having to spend $36,000 at this time on an issue that really should have been resolved with the council vote. But that's where we are. I do hope people who support 3A come out and vote, but everybody's going to have a right to vote, and that's where we are now. That's it, that's all I got.
I just clarify. So you referenced the vote by mail and early voting. That is going to be discussed at O and A through the council order that was brought through. Vote by mail is default unless the city council opts out, but early voting is an opt-in at the recommendation of the Board of Registars.
Is there a discussion to this? Counselor Benson.
Thank you. And just as Counselor Grow, as you were speaking to, just so people understand, and I understand, is right now, though, we are not in compliance. But the grant, but we have grants that we're in possession of, lack of a better way of saying it. We can't use them, but if the vote goes affirmative, reaffirming the council, we can, we can use those. Is that what, just so, just so I?
Basically, yeah, we, because we do not have zoning in effect at this point, we are out of compliance.
Okay.
And that's, that's, that's the operative word. If we get a positive vote on 3A at, at the, at the referendum, the decision of the council stands, and then we can initiate, and, and the zoning will be in effect. So that will bring us into compliance.
And then the grants that we have right now, we can start, we would be able to use them, like, say, ones that we have for critical infrastructure on our roads and stuff like that. Quickly, as I will say, as I'm going to be, I'm supporting this, I believe both what Counselor Gilman and Counselor Grow has said, the sooner we get this on the ballot, the sooner we can have a decision. And hopefully, the voters understand, and I know a lot of voters in Ward Two that I've heard from, they not really passionate about 3A, but they are passionate about fixing their roads and sidewalks. So understanding that and understanding budgetary constraints, hopefully folks make the right decision. Again, and as, with that being said, we, we do need to move forward on this. And we will have this at a date, as you've said, on a Thursday, which will lessen cost. And just to the clerk, though, the numbers that you just put forward, though, there could be some increases, say with things going, prices going up, there could be some increases for paper, et cetera, like, is that possible?
It's possible that they could be more. It's possible it could be a little less, but it's a pretty accurate estimate.
That is, yeah, that's what I wanted, I knew maybe a little bit, but nothing major. All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, with that being said, I'd like to call the roll.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
With blessings, yes.
The vote is six in favor, zero opposed, three absent. The motion passes.
Excellent. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
A moot.
Second.
All those, roll call.
Too much fun, I might say no.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
For fun, no.
Counselor Gilman.
Absolutely.
Counselor Grace. I'm sorry, she's not here. Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Majota. Counselor Memhard.
I'm closer to bed than you all are. Yes.
The vote is five in favor, one opposed, three absent. The motion passes.
Thank you, everybody.
Good job, Counselor Nolan.
Good job.